Welcome to the Tuesday, August 18, 2020 meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, under law chapter thirty A, section twenty, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. School committee is using the Zoom meeting platform to conduct this meeting. LCTV is live streaming the meeting on channel twelve. And the recording of the meeting will be posted to the LCTV YouTube channel as soon as possible after the meeting. Just a reminder, all votes while participating remotely will be made by roll call vote. We have a motion on the agenda.
I move that the school committee meet in executive session pursuant to Master General Law, chapter thirty A, section twenty one A, purpose two, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with all staff and purpose seven, consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings to reconvene into open session at seven P M.
But a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion by anyone? So just for our visitors to hear that again, the school committee will meet in executive session pursuant to General Law, chapter thirty A, section twenty one A, purpose two, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with all staff and purpose seven, consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings to reconvene into open session at seven P M. So we will be back at seven, but first we need a roll call vote. Kevin?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
And a yes from me as well. We will be back at seven, folks. Thank you.
We will now start with a moment of silence as we are remote and cannot do the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. We have correspondence, Kevin.
Yes, we do. We received a number of letters and pieces of correspondence regarding the reopening of the Long Meadow Public Schools. Letters from the following people will be recorded, received as of 1:00 p.m. on Friday, August 14th. Aparent, 811, Victoria Allitt, 86, Kellene Bachelor, 86, Matthew Bell, 86, Ari Behrensen, 811, Maureen Briere, 86, Alex Caricella, 811, Angelique Colby, 89, and 813, Daniel DePande, 87 and 812, Kathleen and Justin Dion, 88, Bernadette and Mike Dunervin, 811, Catherine Eaton, 87, Thomas Flahand, 812, Chris Godrew, 812, Laura Giugio, 811, Heather Goldstein, 813, Nicole Holmes, 86, Jasmine Hutchinson, 89, Carrie Kaiatos, 811, Heather Laporte, 810, LEA staff member, two emails on 811, Aaron Linville, 811, Ann Lombardi, 811, Chris Orzalak, 87, Michelle Pantusco, 86, Rachel Richardson, 86, Erin Ringbloom, 811, Locky and Maureen Russo, 810, Greg Shurians, 87, Megan and Kevin Sheehy, 812, Lee Shinoda, 812, Megan Patrick Streck, 88, Amy Tracy, 86, Tina Vavenzio, 814, Amy Westhaver, 86, Ann Wheeler, 86, Skylar Wright, 87, Maureen Yele, 86. An email from Ms. Katie Gerard dated 86 regarding the start time for school committee meetings.
Thank you, Kevin. Is a possible motion?
I move that the school committee approve the minutes for the August 4, 2020 school committee meeting as presented.
The motion is there a second? Any discussion on the minutes?
Ryan?
Yes, Gianna.
I just, I think on page six, and I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but on page six, there's a a tense having.
Can you tell me the line?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me. It's, um, we are having, and it should be if we have, or if we do not have. Shucks.
I'll look for the tense. There was also a question on page five of the August 4th.
Diane, was that the question that I raised that we wanted to just clarify?
Yes.
So I just wanted to make sure we got the the percent, right? It said 2%, and I want to make sure we're clear that the 2% is it was fewer than 2% of people from Long Meadow tested tested positive for COVID. I think, I just want to make sure that we're getting that wording correct because I think that's important. And so I just want to make sure, is that the correct wording for that part on page five?
Okay, I'm looking on page five, and I can't find what you're talking about, but I have it on paper, Diane. Is it different that I'm looking at the paper?
You're looking at August 4th?
Nope, August 6th.
There you go.
Thank you. All right, so do we have to answer that in order to accept the minutes, or is that something that Kevin, you just want to have us answer moving forward?
I just want to make sure we get it right because initially it was written as less than 2% of Long Meadow residents have COVID, which I know is not true. So I just want to make sure we get it factually correct.
Got it.
And I'm fine if we have to wait for Chief Dearborn or Beverly to make sure we have the wording right. I just don't want to mess that wording up because it is so important.
Understood. So we can not accept the minutes at the moment and get a clarification?
Withdraw the motion?
Why don't we withdraw the motion?
I'm fine to table it. I mean, is that the appropriate way to do it?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll table that and get that answer to make sure our wording is correct. Thank you, Kevin. And Gianna, also, we can look up the one that you were talking about?
Yeah, I found it, Ryan.
Okay, go ahead.
On page six, the paragraph that starts with confidence and certainty.
So that should say have, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else before we table this one? Tabled, do we have to vote for tabling it, Diane?
Let me check my book. I believe you do.
Okay.
I think we do.
In the, in the interest of making sure that we're using the correct language on that portion as noted by Kevin, we will take a vote if we will table this the minutes from August 4th. Gianna?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Yes, for me as well. Other possible motion?
I move that the school committee approve the minutes for the August 6, 2020 school committee meeting as presented.
Motion is there a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none on the August 6 minutes, I'll call for roll call. Gianna?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. Thank you. Next up, we have visitor comments, and before we call on the people who are with us, we have some that were sent in, and obviously this is a new format, but I'm thinking, Kevin, do you have that written? Do you have that in front of you, or do I?
I have it in front of me. I'm happy to read it. So Dr. Alex Berry of 206 Colony Road emailed the following visitor comment. "School opening represents a significant potential mixing of different immune groups. German data suggests there are safe acceptable levels of background COVID in the range of 10 to 20 cases per day per million and two deaths per day per million. It's easy to see that school opening requires vigilance and focus on the part of the whole community, particularly in the two weeks prior to any opening. The medical community knows risk can be substantially reduced through modifications. Are there community plans to bring the community onboard and reduce remaining transmission prior to opening? Thank you." Second visitor comment was from Mr. Eric Bascom, a graduate of LHS, sent along an email to be reflected in visitor comments. His comments are regarding reopening. His email is enclosed in the packet.
Thank you, Kevin. Now, folks that are with us, I will flip through the screen and see if there's anyone. I don't have access to everybody, Diane. How many visitors do we have?
Ryan, there's two people who've indicated in the chat that they'd like to make a comment.
Fantastic. Thank you. I will go there first. Gina Pantusco, you would like to speak? There we go. Oh, you had it. You had it, and you muted yourself again. There you.
Hi, my name is Gina Pantusco. I'm a resident of 60 East Main, and I just have something to read tonight. It shouldn't go much beyond the two minutes, so just bear with me, and it's a bit personal. So hopefully I can get through it, but um so just if you can't hear me, let me know, but I'm gonna start it. That's okay. Like many people on this Zoom meeting, I'm a parent of four kids in the district, a second grader, fourth, sixth, and eighth grade. I'm a former middle school teacher, a coach at a high school, and technically part of the union. I offer a unique perspective, and then I'm also the parent of a child who left September, was perfectly healthy, and out of nowhere became critically ill. After six surgeries in nine days and a three-week stay in the PQ, she came home last week of September. During her two-week follow-up appointment, no one was any closer to understanding what set her immune system off and whether or not it would ever happen again. We weren't given any guarantees, and were told she could go back to school in another two to three weeks when we felt red. The unknown is frightening, especially when it's your child's health at risk. We would have loved to have kept her safe at home with her tutor, but it wasn't what was best for her. She needed to be back at school with her classmates and teachers, getting their true learning experience. It was incredibly difficult to send her to school every day, knowing she'd be exposed to flu, viruses, infection, and that no one, not even the doctors, knew how her immune system was going to react. And to make matters worse, her three siblings would also be exposed to all of them bringing it back to our house. Every time one of our kids had a runny nose, stomach bug, or low-grade temperature, we were on high alert. That fear hasn't completely gone away, and honestly, probably never will, but we had to do what was best for our daughter, and that was to get some normal sleep back in her life by sending her to school every day. And can you believe that not even a year ago, it was never once recommended that she wear a mask to school? One life is too many, agreed, and our daughter is a daily reminder of that to our family. But if we all approach life with that mantra, we'd never leave our houses. And what kind of life would that be creating for our kids? There are no guarantees. We want doctors to be able to see that our daughter would be completely fine going back to school, and her immune system wasn't going to shut down again, and no one could provide that for us. There's a risk every time we leave the house and go to the grocery store, the doctor's office, school sports practice, as teachers and parents were constantly taking the risk of contracting this stomach flu, viruses, infections, but it shouldn't stop us from parenting or teaching. In February, seventy kids in the same school were out on one day, but we didn't shut down. In fact, we crammed into an auditorium that very evening to watch the remaining kids perform a concert. In March, eight out of my ten basketball players were homesick with flu-like symptoms, but the three other kids and coaches still showed up first two rounds of practice. I realize that for some people with compromised immune systems, the fear is necessary. I also realize the fear of the unknown with the virus is legitimate. But what I'm most fearful of is that children in our district might not be back in the classroom until 2021. My daughter might not have a true classroom experience until she's in third grade, having lost critical in-person learning in her first grade and now potentially second grade. I assure you, sitting in front of the screen for six hours a day is not the way to learn or teach our kids. Just as a parent, sitting with their child for six hours a day, make sure that they're paying attention and following along, isn't parenting, and it's impractical. COVID-19 isn't going away anytime soon, but our children's sense of normalcy is. Chief Dearborn said it best in the last meeting. During times of uncertainty, kids going back to school is the first sign of normalcy. Teachers, you are very much essential to creating a normal experience for our kids. In response to the number of teachers that don't want to go back to school, hybrid model, and want to teach from home, I find that really depressing. Given everything our daughter went through last fall, she still went back to school full-time, and she wasn't told to wear a mask. Teachers, you are appreciated. You are necessary and a vital component to creating a new normalcy within our community. Thank you, teachers, administrators, and school committee members. My husband and I are confident that you'll do what's best for our kids. Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you, Gina. We also have a request from.
Hello? Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yeah, we heard you, Gina.
Could you hear the speech?
It was choppy, but yes, we got every word.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we also have a request from Ann Wheeler to speak.
Hello?
Hello, thank you for giving me the time to speak. My name is Ann Wheeler. I'm a resident of 29 Ridgeway Circle. My son is a rising first grader at Wolf Swamp Road School, and I also have prepared remarks to make. I'm here this evening to admit that I made a mistake. When watching the live stream of last week's meeting, I observed as the committee rejected the plan that was worked on for several months and followed the DESE guidelines to quote, "Make decisions about school reopening based upon available data, including levels of community transmission," which were thoroughly reviewed both in the report and at that meeting. Within minutes, we went from having a comprehensive plan to having no plan. I was relieved when a motion was passed to approve a graduated opening, despite the fact that the dates were somewhat arbitrary and not based on data that I could see. However, I naively assumed that in approving the new date, the school committee intended to stick with the spirit of the plan, which included providing a five-day-a-week education for kids in grades K through 2. Instead, as I recently learned, not because it was explicitly announced, but because the cohort models were sent around, the K through 2 children have been lumped into the hybrid model with their older peers. I would like to know when it was decided that the social-emotional needs of our early learners were, I think, quite discreetly jettisoned from the plan. I don't think that I'm the only parent of a K through 2 child who found remote learning did not work for the little kids. My son missed half a year of kindergarten. I spent three months trying to fight him as he transformed from being someone who loved kindergarten and started every day by dancing with his teacher to a depressed, moody, angry, and lonely child who did not engage with the Zooms and did not engage with the work that was being sent home. I would add that my partner and I, between us, we have three graduate degrees. We certainly, you know, should be able to figure out the work, but it's not about the work. It's about the kid and his social and, and emotional needs. I don't think that any child should be forced to learn over Zoom. I get it. We're in a global pandemic, and we all have to make sacrifices. However, and I don't speak for all children because every child is different, but I believe that many children in grades three and up do have the developmentally appropriate coping skills to be okay, if not great, with reduced classroom time. The little kids, however, the K through 2 kids are not wired for this. I urge and implore the school community to revisit the decision about K through 2 learners. Yes, I care about my son, but I also care about all of Long Meadows K through 2 learners. Our preschool teacher used to coach me, a very neurotic, type A, all-A student, college professor, to not put too much pressure on my son. She said, "If I had him do things that he didn't want to do, it will ruin learning for him. These are crucial years for him," she told me. "If we don't amend this plan and provide our youngest learners with five days a week of in-person learning, we will ruin learning for the kids K through 2." I get the data. I get the risks. I get that nobody's getting a great deal right now anywhere, but to ignore our K through 2 learners, I think, and to lump them in with hybrid education and the older kids would be a grave mistake. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda, school committee announce, oh, let me make sure there's nobody else. Is there anybody else that is with us who wants to speak? Make yourself known. I'm clicking on our screen here, and nothing left in the chat. Thank you very much, both of our speakers tonight. School committee announcements and recognitions, committee, anyone? Gianna?
I just wanted to thank Gina and Dr. Wheeler for sharing your, your voices and your stories. Just thank you because they're both very personal.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, our business with guests is a reopening update from the superintendent. You're muted, Marty.
All right, thank you. So when, when following and really been leading up to and during and following the school committee's vote on reopening on August 6, it was clear that the committee wanted the decision to be regularly reviewed in light of all of the things that had to fall into place to make our reopening plan work. And so appreciate the chance to provide the committee with an update on a few important matters, and I'll just do, I have just a couple of slides to share here to sort of frame the discussion. And I'll begin with where we should begin the discussion on health and safety. I wanted to take a minute to review with you and for the, for the wider community, the guidance that the Department of Education put out, and our local health director, Beverly Hershorn, was kind enough to join us tonight. I think that was a request of the committee to make sure that we are regularly monitoring local conditions. But again, before we turn to Beverly, if I could, I'll just share a couple of the slides here. So this is a the color-coded decision-making matrix that the Department of Education had put together, and it relies on largely the color coding relates to the average daily cases per 100,000, and so communities, municipalities, towns are placed into this color-coded metric, red, yellow, green, and as a sort of a quick way to understand local conditions, the department and DPH, MassDPH have been clear that the metrics, the color coding ought to be considered in a broader context, and that communities should work with local boards of health to understand the metrics, understand underlying data, and understand trends, and the importance of looking at multiple reports was, has been emphasized, and I think that has been an interest of the committee as well. And so with that, I think it makes sense to turn it over to Beverly Hershorn for an update and maybe a chance for you to ask any questions that you might have on local conditions. So Beverly, thanks for joining us. Welcome. Feel free to give us a snapshot of how things are appearing locally and any other information you think the committee should have as it reviews on an ongoing basis our reopening plan.
Good evening. Thank you for inviting me, Marty. Okay, so I just, before I, I get to the issue of metrics, I just want to review with the school committee that we have had since March, 247 cases of COVID in this community, and an additional, I just got it off the website, my Maven system, which is our official case count. There were 29 antibody tests, so some, some of those folks don't live in Long Meadow, but in a broad way, let's say there's approximately 275 people in Long Meadow that probably had COVID at some point in time. Seventy percent of those folks were over the age of 70. Seventy percent. There were only six cases. There've only been thus far six cases in the school age group. That's, I roughly use the range 6 through 19. I'm sorry if I'm a little bit off. And all of those of the six cases, five of those cases were travel-related. They were not local transmissions. So earlier in the evening, someone mentioned the positivity rate on lab tests. Last, the figures ending August 12, the state positivity rate during the previous two weeks was 1.75. Today, actually, was about 1.5, and the Long Meadow rate was 1.42. So that would be the total, the number of confirmed cases divided by the number of molecular tests. These are the more conservative and reliable tests that are done for COVID. So our positivity rates were 1.42. That was this information that Marty is bringing up is now on the www.mass.gov website. Unfortunately, these figures ended, were posted on the 12th, and that's one of the problems that I wanted to discuss with you. To our disappointment, though, not unexpected, we ended up on a slightly increased level of yellow, which was an incident, incidence of 4.6 per 100,000. uh, which was an incident, uh, incidence of 4.6 per 100,000 over the previous period. I'm not exactly sure how they get those figures. It's a very complicated statistical process because we only have, um, 16,000 people. So they must have to adjust, adjust what our, uh, new cases are and blow it up to a larger, to a population of 100, um, 100,000. But I, I do want to tell you that, um, during the month of August, the beginning of August, still about the middle of last week, um, we were, um, really getting, um, a number of cases. And I want to stress this, that this is the story behind the story that were related to travel. Uh, that were related to people engaging in sporting events, um, participating in sporting events out of state. Um, and, um, so those were the big, the, the travel and the sporting events out of state really threw off our numbers. So we had higher numbers, uh, in the first couple of weeks in August than we had had for quite some time. But, um, looking really into depth in, in these cases, um, there were, these were not community transmissions. These were not transmissions from one person in Long Meadow to another. Um, we're hoping that, um, with the new travel ban that the governor has rolled out, um, and, um, that we will, um, begin to see big improvements because we had a heck of a lot of people who had traveled and were walking around with COVID symptoms for a week or more and never got tested. So I am happy to report that as of today, and I just checked, uh, after six o'clock today, we have one, and I repeat, one active case of COVID uh, in the town of Long Meadow. All of these prior cases that were travel-related or came from participation in sporting events out of, out of the, uh, out of state, all of these, uh, people have now recovered. And there are new people that are, um, coming in. So, uh, that are coming on to our, our Maven system. So, um, I think that's rather good news, but it may take a couple of weeks before their statistical data um, will catch up with what I'm seeing on the ground as of today. So, um, I think that, um, this risk system that the state has devised, I think it's, it's, it's good because it requires communities who really aren't on top of things perhaps to really wake up and take a look and say, you know, these figures really aren't acceptable. Are we missing people? Are we doing good case, uh, follow-up and contact tracing? Um, but to be very honest, we knew what the source of our problems were uh, about two, three weeks ago. And it takes a little while for the way this statistical system data works to bring it down to the green and white level. But it's, um, I'm happy to report that today we have one case in Long Meadow, active case in isolation. Uh, and, uh, I don't believe that we have any in quarantine at the moment either. So, um, that's, uh, very good. And I'm just beginning to get in, um, the figures from people who travel, um, and make out the travel forms. So we'll be watching those folks, uh, and checking in with them to see if they have any, uh, symptoms. And they've all, they've all been required to test. So I think that's, I think it's very important that these metrics were developed, but it doesn't tell the whole story and you have to look beyond the headlines. And so, um, I'm hoping that you will keep, um, in touch with, uh, John Dearborn or myself. Uh, because sometimes we can really either give you a heads up that things are not going in the direction, right direction, or, um, basically, um, able to under, give you a better understanding of what these color-coded metrics really mean for, um, you and making a decision on how you want to move forward. Um, it was very interesting today that I actually was listening to a conference of health directors. And they were, the question was, can we, can school departments use green or white or unshaded? Um, is that, uh, as a determination that you could go back either to a hybrid or a full-time schedule? And that, I think they were trying to say that these metrics were not used to be used at the moment in the reverse direction of expanding um, your particular in, in-person participation. But the metrics are really good, uh, for, to wake us all up, um, if we're not going in the right direction and, uh, increase, uh, our surveillance level, um, on the, on the town, on the town by town level. So I'm happy to answer questions. Um, right now I have to say that we're following, um, trends um, that you might've heard on TV. Most of the recent cases over the last several weeks have been in the 22, 39-year-old category, uh, which is very disturbing. Um, we feel that that is resulting from social behaviors. And, um, but fortunately, our, um, elders are seeming to do pretty well at this point in time. We haven't had a case of, uh, an elder person in quite a while. So they, they, they must be staying at home and following, uh, the sheltering in place guidelines. So, um, I wondered if I could, uh, you know, provide any more information or if you have information that you need a quick response to, you're always welcome, either individually or through Marty to shoot either, uh, John Dearborn or me an email just to get clarification.
Thank you. Thank you. I know Jamie has a question.
Okay, sure. Suzie does too.
Yep. Hi, hi Beverly. Thank, thank you so much for this information. We truly appreciate it. Um, I guess my, my quick, uh, question here is more around the demographics. I know you kind of give us a quick snapshot of, hey, 20 to 29. That concerns me, but from a school committee and I guess more importantly, Dr. O'Shea and, uh, you know, uh, Mr. Maza, you know, how do, how do they get this information on a daily basis as opposed to in arrears and keep them informed as to what's going on? Um, and if, if from a real-time information, if anybody is, so we may have cases where they haven't been dying clinically diagnosed, but if we're quarantining a large portion of the population within town, whether it's a long-term care facility, whether it's a sports team, whether it's a household that decided to travel to Italy, they, they should be aware of that. How does that communication work? They being Dr. O'Shea. I don't need to know it. As long as Dr. O'Shea knows it and can have a, you know, a discussion and, you know, but prior to being fully clinically diagnosed with COVID as opposed to working in reverse here.
Do you want me to answer that? Okay. So, um, the data that I'm talking about are confirmed cases. Um, your school nurses, um, will be sending children home if they're in school and they start exhibiting symptoms that possibly could be related to COVID. I'm not sure exactly how, um, school health data is transmitted to the superintendent, but, um,
Yep. Sorry, Beverly. I didn't mean to cut you off. I, the, the school-related one, I think, Dr. O'Shea would be fully in touch with what's going on in the schools. I'm talking a club sports team that has nothing to do with the schools and you know that they are quarantining this entire team. And then any confirmed cases yet has nothing to do with the schools, but, uh, all these kids go to school at the schools that Dr. O'Shea is responsible for. How does he, how does he know that?
Uh, the real question is, how would I know that? Um, the, the, the experience I've had recently with an out-of-state sports team was that the organizer of the sports team knew that, um, there were some Long Meadow people on that team because it's not even, it's not even a mass team. And called me and said, you know, uh, one of the members of the team um, has been diagnosed with COVID and the, I've, I've suggested to the other girls, they happen to be girls, but it doesn't really matter. I've suggested to the other players that they go get tested, but unless she had called me, I would have no knowledge um, that there had been any exposures, uh, unless, uh, the, um, other community had, um, had taken down that one of these kids were, um, a contact. And I would have been notified that they were contacts, but I'm not even sure that the first, the first, what I would call the index case. I'm not even sure if that person had received their, their, um, results of their medical test yet. I think I was just called saying, there is somebody on that team that is going to get a COVID test, but maybe you want to tell the other people about it. Marty? Oops, I can't hear.
Can I ask a question? I think it's the same question, maybe just asked a slightly different way. If, if, if there was a, um, let's take it away from a sports team for a minute. If there was a family that, um, was involved in a testing protocol and was quarantining. If, if they, uh, if they have, uh, registered for tests, if they're waiting test results, if they're quarantining, how do you become aware of that? And then how do I become aware of that? I guess is the question.
Okay. Well, I, I do know people who are, uh, quarantining because they were traveling. I will allegedly sometime this week be getting that information. Um, I do know people who, um, have been identified as contacts of trace of cases and they're being quarantined. If they were, uh, a contact of somebody in our town, I would get that when we do the case investigation of, of the case, the investigation of the case. If it's from another town, I have to wait for the, the other town to alert me that, um, one of my residents was a contact, one or more of my residents was a contact of a case, that they will not, they will not, they will not get in touch with me, um, until there's a, a definitive positive lab test. And they might know it, not know it either.
Thank you. Uh, Suzie, you have a question?
Yes, I had a question. Um, and I'm actually trying to remember what it was. Oh, um, back to Marty, if you could go back to slide three. Um, related to, um, what you said, Beverly, and, and thank you for the explanation and, and letting us know that uh, things are certainly looking better than, than they were. Um, when you, you said something to the effect of, you know, schools aren't really, you know, it's not suggesting that schools are, are using this to sort of, you know, expand their offerings, but I, I guess I'm confused by the green and the unshaded. I, I'm confused by full-time in-person when there's still CDC guidelines that I think regardless of the fact that you have only five total cases over the past 14 days in a, in, in any given community, that COVID is still there. So wouldn't schools still be, uh, restricted by the guidelines of CDC in terms of social distancing and mask wearing and all of those? Or do you just, because you're in an unshaded category, you just throw caution to the wind and you don't, you don't use any of those. I'm confused that this chart has confused me in that regard. So if you can shed a little light on that, I would appreciate it.
You are just as confused as we are confused. Um, I think, um, the, 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 basically the takeaway from the discussion today was that, um, th- these metrics are more helpful to health departments in getting an idea of whether they're on the right track or need to step up their surveillance. They're not as helpful in giving you something definitive to say, well, if I'm white, I should be able to move kids into a full in-person schedule. And if you're in green, I don't know. Yeah. Um, that, that was as best as I could get out of the discussion today. We're, as health professionals, we're a little bit confused as to the utility of, of this uh, new cu- color coding metric. There is certainly some risk. And if we, if Long Meadow perchance goes into the green the next time they do a posting, um, on, uh, the state website, it will probably mean that we will have one or two or possibly three cases going at a time. It's not zero.
I, I just, I, I think it's important to distinguish because, you know, i- if, if as, as community members watching this and saying, oh, if we could only just get us into the green and the white, then it, it indicates we should be full-time in-person. There's still those six-foot guidelines and mask wearing that, that I think supersede this full-time in-person piece on here. I, I think we just need clear guidance as to that so that we don't set up expectations of the community that if we go to white in the next two weeks, everybody can go back to school full-time. You see what I'm saying? I, I just want to be, I just want to be really clear for the community that's watching that, that's not what this means.
It certainly doesn't mean that you're going to throw the, um, mask-wearing protocol of the window if you're in the white. Because things can change any day of the week.
Right.
So I think your, your basic protocols should stick no matter whether you're in white, green or yellow.
Well, right. And those are, and yeah, and those are the CDC guidelines and, and the DSC guidelines that, that we've, that have been established that we've, we've established as a district and by the, um, recommendation of the superintendent, that six feet with a mask is the safest way to, you know, conduct our, our in-school learning. And in that case, the, the space doesn't allow for, the space we have doesn't allow for full-time in-person learning with six feet, wearing a mask. So I just wanted to be very clear that we, you know, you have to look at both of those things together, I would assume.
Well, for how, from a health perspective, um, we, we would only be doing contact tracing for people who were within six feet for more than 15 minutes. So if you have the kids seated three feet apart, then basically everybody on either side and maybe the next kid over and the kid in front or in back, they're all going to be staying out if we have a case. So the further out you can, uh, get kids in the physical, when, in the physical limitations you have,
Right.
the fewer kids have, have to go into quarantine and just disrupt their learning. Uh, so I think it's, if you can maintain that six-foot perimeter, um, it's to your advantage.
And, um, lastly, it's, um, from what I understand, the, this report comes out, um, once per week now and gives data for the, for the previous two-week period. So we will get another report tomorrow afternoon.
Right. And I'm not sure whether, I, I, we haven't, I, I really don't understand how they get their statistics and not, nobody else does either. And because they're, they're using some statistical models that I'm not familiar with, but I can tell you that my case numbers have gone down drastically in the last two weeks.
That's great.
Uh, from a very ati- from a very atypical level. It was sort of like a, a bump all at once of travel and uh, sports, uh, related. It was sort of like a, a bump all at once of travel and uh, sports related um, cases. And now we're back to the one, one, two, maybe three people at a time uh, for a population of 16,000.
Yeah. That's great. Thank you so much.
But I'm not sure we're going to be in green this time. It depends.
Right. No, I know, I know you can't predict that. No, I, I understand. I was trying to figure out the, the mathematical, you know, the, the mathematics behind it as well. And it was pretty, it, it's, it's pretty difficult to do. So.
I also, um, I also want to say that things can change anytime. I, I don't mean to sound less optimistic than John. But um, this is how we're going now. And um, the key thing that we're thinking from the public health side is the need for flexibility. Right now, things are going very well, uh, both statewide and locally. But um, it's something that we have to look at, we look at every single day of the week. And um, you know, we want to be speaking with Marty fairly frequently. Uh, bringing any concerns uh, to him or good news to him um, as to how we're doing. So it's, the key is flexibility here um, based on what we're seeing on the ground.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question for Beverly? Looking through.
If I could just throw in a comment?
Please.
Um, thank you, Beverly. This is like very, very good news. Thank you so much for sharing. I just wanted to, on Suzie's point, because Suzie, the way I read that table when it said um, full-time in-person. Was the way that, that you talked about it at the end where it is with masks, six-foot distancing. All the hand washing and all of the um, hygiene protocols that we've previously talked about. So I think that's a really good point to let people know that the full-time in-person is not pre-COVID full-time in-person. It's COVID times in-person. So yeah, that's, that's how I read it. So I just wanted to, to follow up on your point. Thank you.
Thank you. Great, great point, Kevin. Um, anyone else with a question for Beverly? Armin?
Um, so suppose that town data were to conflict with um, like county data, for example. Um, in terms, let's say that like Long Meadow would be in the green category and then Hampden County um, in the yellow. What would be the more telling indicator for, to guide school opening?
That's a very good question. In general, um, we would like to think that Long Meadow is an island. And um, that, you know, somehow there's a barrier. Somehow as you come up Forest Glen Row, into Forest Glen Road from the highway. That we have a 50-foot wall and nothing penetrates Long Meadow. Um, another source of our infections was a major cluster um, in a neighboring community. And I'm not going to name the community. It had absolutely nothing to do with Long Meadow. Except some innocent Long Meadow people either were employed there or were, or were in this institution for some other reason. So um, generally, um, I don't like to, I, to put, uh, use countywide data. Certainly for chronic illnesses, it's not applicable at all. And, and Hampden County being the worst county in the state in most of the chronic illness parameters. I certainly would not think that I was doing a great job if I only uh, were able to meet uh, the uh, the parameters. For, for, for the rest of the communities in Hampden County. But I do give weight, I, I would be thinking seriously about knowing what is happening in, in the county. And I do, we do share information among health officers as to problems going on um, in other cities within the county. So um, I, 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 I would do, I would take some consideration um, to um, what's going on in the county. But I'd have to know a little bit more about it. As you know, there are tremendous disparities um, in, at case rates. Uh, among uh, black and Latina, black and Latino population. So I'd, I'd, um, and uh, they make up a infinitesimal percentage of the Long Meadow population. So I'd want to dig a little bit deeper into people's data to know whether that, these are community transmissions. And I, should I be assuming that people mix from community to community, which they certainly do? Or, or, or is there something special going on there? Is, is there a cluster at a nursing home? Is there a cluster at a workplace? I, 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 when, when I, when I saw the data for a couple of the communities in, in Hampden County. I tried to find out a little bit more about it to see if I thought that that may pose a problem for us um, eventually. So yes, the, the countywide um, information is very important. In fact, Massachusetts is very important. People get in their cars every weekend and drive down to Cave Cod or out to the Berkshires or whatever. So I'm always looking um, at county and state data and trying to figure out um, what, what the story is behind the statistics.
Thank you. Great question, Armin.
Thank you, Armin.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Question for Beverly. All right. Thank you, Beverly.
Good night, folks.
Marty, further updates?
Sure. Um, just uh, excuse me. Couple additional updates. Uh, wanted to sort of make, I know the committee's aware. I want to acknowledge that one of the challenges uh, that we're looking at is um, recognizing that there are some specific uh, leaves. That staff can access related to uh, COVID-19 scenarios. So under the Family First Coronavirus Response Act, there is an opportunity for extended um, sick leave. And an opportunity for extended family medical leave. And so um, I want to thank Erica Jalinas, who's the town HR director for um, being very responsive to uh, staff requests. Getting them information, uh, processing uh, requests to access the leaves that are depicted on this slide. But it's something that we will want to continually monitor and update the committee on. I think, you know, we, we've said many times that there are a number of contingencies. A number of factors that need to be in place in order for us to open safely. And in order for us to uh, have a educational model that is as good as it can be. And so one of the issues that we are sort of increasingly concerned about is staffing. And so, you know, we want to support staff who have um, you know, real reasons for accessing the leaves that are depicted on this slide. Uh, and kind of balance that against the, the needs to appropriately staff our classrooms. So uh, I just wanted to kind of put that out there as kind of a, uh, as part of the broader context that we are working inside of. And committee has any questions on that, we'd be happy to answer those. And then uh, I also wanted the committee and the community to know that our principals are very uh, busy developing uh, school-based reopening plans. And I can expect that uh, probably midweek, possibly as early as tomorrow. That these school-based reopening plans will be posted. I would ask the community to understand that these school-based reopening plans will be dynamic documents. They will be regularly updated. They will be, you know, sort of works, regular works in progress. It might be, for example, that in one of the components, one of the categories listed here. That uh, when it's posted, it may say, you know, additional information coming soon. But we will put the, the, the best and most accurate information that we possibly have um, into these school-based reopening plans. And then finally, I wanted to um, update the committee on Cohort C. Uh, I know that one of the things that we need to get out, and I'm hoping to put this out again as early as tomorrow. Is sort of a, a more binding um, opportunity for families to uh, choose Cohort C. You'll recall that Cohort C would be for students whose families, uh, for a variety of reasons, aren't prepared to have them come back for any uh, in-person learning. And so we think that the great uh, majority of students will, who are in Cohort C, will opt to work within the hybrid model. And so if you are Cohort, Cohort C, you would be learning, you'd be working and learning remotely uh, with uh, Cohort B uh, Monday and Tuesday. And Cohort A on Thursday and Friday. And like all other Long Meadow students, you'd be learning remotely throughout the day on Wednesday. So the expectation there would be for Cohort C that they, that they are, uh, they have the same opportunities as the um, other remote cohorts. To synchronously access the instruction, to synchronously access the in-person instruction that's happening uh, for students in the in-school cohorts. Now, we understand that, and so if you are in that, in that Cohort C, uh, you uh, as a student, you would be, you would have a schedule that is uh, routine and predictable. Uh, with, with very specific uh, sort of um, attendance requirements and engagement requirements. You will learn alongside Cohort A and B and you'll progress through the curriculum. We recognize that there are some families who um, because of a unique family situation, may not uh, need, may not benefit from sort of a more predictable, routine, strict schedule that would come from being in, part of that hybrid model. And so in those situations, we would, we intend to work with families individually to find a good fit. Uh, so if there is a family that, um, let's say there's two working parents. And uh, they can't keep up with the demands of a regular schedule during the school day. It might be that one of the options that you see under B or C are appropriate for their children. And so our intention is to sort of match the uh, the, the, the offering with what the family needs and what the child needs. Our principals are actively investigating these offerings. There's a, a state webinar um, coming up on um, on the, on the learning management systems offerings, uh, letter C. And Sue has done quite a bit of work on these remote offerings and has been in touch with uh, some DSC officials. And can provide additional explanation and information if you need it. Again, the intention is that um, as early as tomorrow, we will send out uh, what will be less of a survey. And more of a sort of binding commitment. Um, where, where parents will, will essentially register for participation in Cohort C. We do recognize that the decision can change, right? In other words, uh, it may be that a family starts off in a, in-person as part of Cohort A or Cohort B. And then they define that it just doesn't work for them as a family and that they want to switch into Cohort C. And that will be allowable. Uh, I think that I would want to be upfront with families to let them know that it's sort of easy that it's, it's more seamless to slide into uh, Cohort C. If you're attached to the hybrid model, it might be a little bit more challenged to move children in and out of the Commonwealth Virtual School offerings. Or the Learning Management Systems offerings. In other words, those, if children are moving in and out of B and C here. Uh, it would require obviously some setup time and some, some conversation and some uh, sort of managerial work that would have to take place. So uh, I'd want to be upfront with families that if they are accessing B or C here. That um, that they're patient with us in terms of getting students set up for success. If those offerings are accessed, if the offerings under B and C here, there's a lot of Bs and Cs, I should, I should have chose numbers. If the offerings under Commonwealth Virtual Schools or the offerings under Learning Management System, is systems, if those are accessed. So that's, that's sort of an update on where we are with serving students who's, who choose not to participate. Whose families have them choose not to participate in any in-person learning. Uh, so that, that's sort of a, a quick snapshot of where a few important things stand. I think families can expect uh, some communication on Cohort C tomorrow. And they can expect to see uh, school-based reopening plans posted to district websites as early as tomorrow as well. Again, understanding that uh, in some ways, the, the beginning of the school year for the return of staff is right around the corner. But we do have, because of the school committee vote, we do have some additional time to sort out um, student schedules. And to sort out uh, the cohort model as it's described here. So happy to take a shot at answering any questions that you might have on any of the, some of the information that we talked about here.
Yeah, I have a question before I call anybody else on this slide right here, Marty, on Cohort C. Will the families be communicating with the building principal on option A here, integration with hybrid? But have to communicate with uh, central office regarding the other two?
That, that's what we see, Ryan. We see that um, there would be sort of a, a point person for families who want to access. The more, you know, sort of uh, the, the platforms that are described under Commonwealth Virtual Schools and Learning Management Systems. So yes.
Kevin?
Marty, I, I defer to you to how you want to handle this, but I, I'm sure the high school parents uh, with students in fall sports would really appreciate a sports update. Uh, I'm fine if you want to defer that to Principal Landers. Um, but if you had an update ready, I think that many folks would really appreciate that.
Kevin, I wish I did. I think there was some information that came out today. I just honestly didn't have a chance to review it. And uh, it's something that I would, I would probably ask Principal Landers to, to work through that in terms of where things stand with the MIA.
So, so it's safe to assume that, that, that update will be forthcoming either from the athletic director or Principal Landers?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. Great question.
Thank you, Kevin. I'm going to click through and see if anyone else has their hand up. Gianna?
Thanks for the update, Superintendent. Uh, just a quick question to confirm. I know you mentioned this before. We've had a discussion about it a couple of times. The, as parents and caregivers are contemplating if their child is going to be fully remote. Um, will there be information on that, the letter or the document, whatever, that's going out to confirm that those students will be able to participate in sports and extracurricular activities?
They will remain as members of the Long Meadow School Community. And they'll have all the sort of rights and privileges that go with that. And uh, you know, assuming we're not talking about any medical limitations. I would expect that those students, to the extent that extracurriculars and athletics are running, I would expect that those students uh, would have the same opportunities.
Thank you.
I have a question?
Sorry, I was muted. I said Bronwyn and then Suzie, please.
Um, Marty, just a follow-up to the uh, athletics. So if the high school students are remote for the first three weeks. Um, they would still be able to participate in sports? It just doesn't seem to align for me.
Yeah, I, I think um, if, if, I think that's what, that's sort of the information that we're waiting on from the MIAA. To understand uh, what, what athletics might be, what might be able to be run based on risk. And based on whether a school's in a hybrid mode or a remote mode. Um, I wish I had better information for you on that tonight, Bronwyn. I think I, I do, would just ask that. Uh, I'll ask Principal Landers to include that on his sort of school-based reopening plan and, and. of school-based reopening plan, and we'll get that information out. And I, unless Mr. Maz, I don't know if you've had any conversations, or, or Sue, if you have had any conversations relative to athletics, but I think we, okay.
I looked over the, the document that came out, but not in any great detail enough to speak to it, sorry.
We understand the, we understand the, the community's interest in that.
Suzie.
Thank you. Um, it, thank you for the update. The, I would like to go back to something we discussed at the last meeting, and I, I want to start by pointing out that I think it got sort of passed over because it was part of an, basically an amendment that didn't, you know, that didn't fit at the time. And so we didn't, I don't really feel like we fully fleshed it out, so I'd like to, uh, propose, and I'm not, I'm proposing it for discussion, I'm, I'm, I can make a motion if I need to. It's, it's definitely related to the opening, the reopening. Ryan, how would you like me to proceed with a motion, or would you like me to just bring up the topic?
Well, if it starts with a question about reopening, I guess it can start there. And then if it becomes something that we're gonna have to consider as a motion, then I guess we'll do that second.
Okay, sounds good.
Phrase it in the form of a question, please.
I wonder if it's possible, is that good to start with? If we might, if the admin team could respond to, to a proposal where potentially K2 is half-day in-person, potentially four days a week, excluding Wednesday, with Wednesday being an asynchronous or synchronous learning day, with a full-day option that's available to families who wish to keep their kids in full day. As the, the original presentation was to allow for, that the space allowed for K2 students to be full-time in-person, not on a hybrid model. Potentially, could the core academics be provided in the morning and specials being held in the afternoon? So it was, it would be a choice for families to have their kids in school half-day or full day, depending on their needs. And then specials could, could be provided asynchronously on CSOW to families who use, since that's the platform you're using, to families who pick their kids up after a half-day. There will always be the synchronous component because of Cohort C, so you maintain that. I would like to ask Marty if that's, if that's a possibility to consider that.
I, we're, we're open to, I think if the, if the committee would like us to dive into that and, and sort of look at the pros and cons, I think the, the, my initial question is, relates to the, the why part of that. So in other words, what, what, what would we hope to achieve with that model? And I'm asking sort of genuinely, I'm not asking in any, in any way that suggests I'm not in favor of that, but if, so what would, what, if, if we can? Yeah.
I'm happy to answer that question. What we've heard in numerous emails and in numerous conversations, I think that originally brought us to potentially going to the, the hybrid piece, is that not all families wanted their littlest ones in school full-time, but the half-day option was, was, was sort of appealing because it was not full-day, the kids weren't wearing the mask full-day, but at least, you know, for, for, in this case, four days a week, you know, there would be a half-day option for families. And then there is a full-day need for some families because they just can't, cannot accommodate their children and, and supporting their learning at home. And, and again, we heard that from one of our, our speakers this evening as well. So I think that the half-day with a full-day option certainly meets more of the needs of the families in the community and in the K2 realm, rather than the hybrid doing that. So I, I would just like to know more about, you know, how that could potentially be accommodated since the district had originally asked for full days for all of these students. Could there be an option for a half-day model with a full-day option? Or a full-day model with a half-day option? You can look at it either way.
Yeah.
And I'm open to, you know, obviously the committee would love to hear your thoughts on that.
So my first thought is to make sure that we're following our calls correctly and not discussing the possibility of changing our plan at the moment because we did, we discussed K2 and, and made a motion to amend the hybrid plan that was presented, where the current situation with K2 came from. So if you have a question for Marty about, can you get this information from the administrators on how this might look? That's just a question for information, which I think is perfectly fine. And if people want to chime in and say, yeah, I'd like to see that too, I think that makes sense. I don't, I'm not sure a full-blown discussion about something that is not currently in our plan, nor is currently a motion, would make a lot of sense, or might even be appropriate based on the rules, not, not that I'm claiming to be an expert, but the, I think.
Yes, and that, that's why I asked.
I see.
Mister Chair.
Jamie, you have something to add on that topic?
Yeah, I would just say, just on a clarification, so given, given the timeframe that, that we're on here, obviously, an adjustment like this, we really need to think through, and I don't think waiting another week or two weeks is appropriate. So is what I'm hearing, that, that a motion on the floor would help us to at least discuss this, vet it out, let everybody hear what the thoughts are, and everybody can actually talk about it. Case, then I'm the one who made that change. I made that change for other reasons to align families. I'm more than happy to make a motion to at least have the discussion, because I think it's very important.
Okay, hang on one second. So Diane, can you explain the rules to make sure that this is heard properly?
Yep. So you made a motion at the last meeting. You cannot move to reconsider that motion. You could move to rescind it, what you've already approved. You could move to amend the mo, what had already been approved. If you choose to do that tonight, you, you move to amend your decision of the last meeting, it would require two-thirds vote to move forward, to be approved. If you didn't get, so two-thirds of seven of you, as five, would have to be voting in the affirmative for it to pass.
And that would be for any, anything regarding the reopening plan at the moment, or just specifically things that were very specifically moved? Is that for anything?
That would be for your plan that you already approved. And so if you are just notifying us tonight, one of the committee members, that at the next meeting, you want to go ahead and make a motion, then that at the next meeting would only require a, a majority of your committee to pass. So it wouldn't be a two-thirds vote, it would be just a majority.
So, help, go ahead, Ryan. Are we allowed, if, if we were to go that second route, are you saying that we could discuss that tonight, or we're just saying, hey, we would like to revisit this? And if, I would say we need to have a special meeting in advance of a two weeks, because I don't think we can leave everybody in limbo if we're really thinking about revisiting this in a serious way.
Our, our next meeting is next week.
Yeah. So your next meeting is next Tuesday. All you have to do is notify the committee of your intentions to move to either rescind or amend what you've already decided.
Yeah, and I'm saying, I, I completely hear what you're saying. I'm just saying, like, maybe this Friday, I mean, everybody is on tight timeframe. We've added 10 days. We've made a bunch of adjustments. I'm just wondering whether we should look at something later on this week, just so everybody can plan against it. I know it's only three days, but, you know, for, for those K through two, to have that discussion, any changes could be pretty dramatic.
Gianna.
I personally would like to hear from the, I would like to see the administrators and, and the, you know, school officials and leaders flesh this out before we have a conversation about it tonight. I agree with Jamie, like, if we could, you know, have a special meeting as soon as possible, but I would like to hear from the school leaders.
Thank you. Nicole.
All right. I'm also wondering, and maybe this can just be a point of clarification for Suzie, are you suggesting the idea of still having two cohorts, but in separate half-days, one in the morning, one in the afternoon? Or are you suggesting that K through two would be full in-person just for the half-day? And then I have a follow-up based on that as well.
Muted, Suzie.
So my question to Marty, I'm going to re-characterize it as a question, is could the administrative team consider and, and present a response to the question of offering a, a half-day, full-day option, four days a week for students to return in-person in K2, where all students attend in each grade level for the four days? There would not be a Cohort A and B. There would be an extension of the day for, for families who need a full-day option?
Or choose.
That's the question.
Or choose. It doesn't have to be a need.
Or choose, right.
So my follow-up for that would be that if we go down that road, that I would be curious to know if that would be able to be achieved within our six-foot social distance guidelines that we've committed to, and if we have the staffing available to ensure that 18 to 22 first graders are able to stay six feet away from each other for that extended amount of time.
So we should, the, the answer to both of those should be yes, because the original admin plan presented to us was for K2 to be all there at the same time. Therefore, they have officially stated to us that they could do the six feet and they can staff it. So that should be a yes. Marty, you had your hand up? You wanted to add something? Marty, you're muted.
I think if, so what you said is true, Ryan, that since we presented a plan that had all K2 returning with a six-foot distance, then we ought to be able to do it here. The qualification of that, and it could be a big qualifier, is that we would need to understand what parents' intentions were on this and, and create class lists that were equitably sized, right? So that, that's a fair amount of work, aid to educate, to study it, plan a staffing model around it, think about the curriculum, educate parents, find out what their intentions would be, and then create the cohorts. So it, it would be a fairly involved process. The other thing that I, the other question I have is, if it's a half-day and the specials are in the afternoon, it seems to me that we would be reducing, unless I'm misunderstanding, or there's another way to think about it, we would be reducing the amount of sort of core academic time that kids would have. And so that's one thing. And if, if safety was part of the reason we took the K2 model off the table, then doing this brings us back to that safety question, right? It, the, that was one of the concerns, I think. That was one of the reasons perhaps, but I think it puts that back in front of us. So again, we, we will, you know, our administrative team is willing to do the hard work. I've said very frankly sometimes that, you know, a, a hybrid plan requires more time and effort of, of all. It's, it's the harder, you know, if, at least for educators and for administrators, it's hard to pull that together, but we're willing to do that. And so we'd be willing to, to, you know, plot this out for you. Time is short. We've spent a fair amount of time planning the hybrid models that we had presented, and I'm worried about the turnaround time from this meeting to the time that we could, you know, schedule it and have it ready to go.
I'd like to follow up on that quickly. I know, Jamie, you had your hand up to be the next speaker. I think we have stated to the public that we were going to revisit this as needed, but we really do have to be mindful, like Marty just said, about changing it maybe too much and giving people something solid that they can plan for. That's just something I think people would appreciate. Jamie, go ahead.
Yep.
Then yourself.
Yep, two, I think I'm unmuted. Just two points of clarification. The number one reason, because I, you know, that we were trying to align this, so the families, that was probably the primary, I think safety was a secondary. And this, I, I get that this is, this is a change, and I hear what you're saying, Ryan, on that, but this goes back to where, where it all started from the reopening committee. So it kind of just gets us back to where we were the previous week. So that was just my two points.
I'm just going to call, I'm just going to call myself because Ryan's stepped away. Marty, would it take, would it be any different for the principals to have to redo the classes? Because right now, if they've already done the classes, they don't know how many kids are going to be in Cohort C. So technically speaking, there could be, you know what I mean? Like, in-person, someone could have five. Of course, they're still teaching to 15. I totally understand that, and that's going to be very difficult. But in terms of, you know, the students in their classroom, I don't know that this late date really changes that, because we still have the Cohort C thing. It's also an unknown. So, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, we have, we have some sense of Cohort C based on surveys that we've done, where we actually asked parents to identify their, their child's name if they had an interest in Cohort C. We did say it was non-binding, it's not final information, but we have some sense of what that's going to look like, and the, and the principals were, were scheduling, developing class lists accordingly. I'm, I'm, I think my, my biggest worry here is the effect that this would have, again, and maybe I'm misunderstanding the thought behind it, but the effect that it would have on core academic time if we're moving the specials to the afternoon exclusively. Our, our current model, whether we were full-in-person K2 or hybrid K2, our current model was, was based on these specials teachers being part of a team that served each grade level. So that would, it would cause that, I think, and Sue, you, you may have some better thoughts on this, I think it would cause us to have to rethink that. K5. Sue, yeah, so.
So I'm, I'm thinking the same way, and I'm trying to just do a schedule quickly in my mind about, so you would need a special subject teacher to be able to teach remotely in the afternoon, and then, you know, teacher, to teach in-person in the afternoon, potentially, but that would force all of our specials to the afternoon, which wouldn't give us enough teachers in the afternoon, special subject teachers in the afternoon, and too many in the morning. If I'm just, I, I'm just trying to, like, rough it out, you know, in my head first. So without really sitting down with the elementary principals and thinking about those kinds of adjustments and not knowing who would be half-day and how many might be full-day, I feel like it's really premature to give an answer on that. Whereas if everyone was in full-day, we would revolt, we would rotate the schedule, and it would be, it would be fine in that capacity. So I, I feel like we need principal input, you know?
Yep.
Take a question, and, yeah, just.
Go ahead, Suzie.
My question was. My question was in response to, you know, the sentiments shared by Ms. Wheeler at the beginning. The sentiments shared by numerous folks that the hybrid model would would not really work for them. And they take more advantage of a a half day option, uh, four days a week and and with a full day extension if. If necessary or if chosen. Um, a- and that's, that's where the question is coming from primarily, trying to, trying to serve the most. Um, families with the options that we have. And like, I I hear you on the on the time, and I know that that you would have to figure that out. I I completely understand that, and thank you for being willing to even consider it. Um, at this time, I'm. Um, but the the one thing is, you're still gonna have, teachers are still gonna have to teach remotely anyway. Um, because of cohort C, so you know, that that's something that would still be part of all of that anyway.
Yeah.
But, but thank you, thank you for consider considering it.
Bronwyn?
Oh, I was just gonna say. I think a a couple of people mentioned it already, if if. We think it's a good idea for Marty and Sue to talk to the elementary school principals. Um, and see if they think they can turn their full day plan in into this plan. Um, and see if they're wanting to do that, or if they're wanting to stick with the hybrid and get their recommendation. And then. Maybe we could have them come to a meeting. And then talk about it more.
Yeah, I think the, you know, based on Suzie's question, that we can get information on this. And probably any other options that come up to us. This isn't the last time we're gonna be discussing what's going on. Where um, ideas may reflect changes in COVID, one way or the other. So having multiple plans. Um, is going to be necessary. So I know it's an exercise for the principals to have to think about scheduling, and I do, I understand. My middle school got scheduled today. I understand the pain that they're going through to try to do this, but. It's instructive and it's helpful to us as we move forward. If we decide to discuss or move or or vote for another. Option, we need to know what it means. So the details, I think, are very important. So if they could be asked that question, I think that would be. And get back to us, that'd be great.
Are we able to set a timetable or?
Well, our meeting's next, we have a meeting next week, right?
Next Tuesday?
Answering these questions is ongoing, because it's it's going to be an ongoing situation. So next week.
Ryan, in light of that, right, does, did you think at each meeting? Someone should say, um, because like Diane was saying before, you have to like rescind or amend. So in light of that, and us saying that we were gonna look at everything. Um, each week and pivot if necessary, one way or the other. Should someone say at each meeting, um, you know, it's possible at the next meeting, I might. Wanna make a motion to switch the original motion, so that we don't have to wait another week?
Um, hoping Diane, maybe if you can chime in, that somebody in the meeting before would have to be a lot more specific than that?
Robert's rules doesn't say that. They say that you just have to notice that you plan to. Make a motion at the next meeting to either amend or rescind the decision, your reopening plan.
Or just like.
Already approved.
In which case, we would have to make that motion and then deal with it every single meeting?
We make the statement tonight and it covers the whole vote, right?
Okay, I could, I'll tell, I can tell you my preference. My preference is that. The rules make it difficult to change things for a reason, and if we've made. A plan that we've shared with everyone, I think it should be for a very good reason that we're switching it, and therefore you should be able to get five out of seven. Therefore, we don't need to plan ahead, because there is already the process. So if there is some compelling reason to change the plan. And it is that compelling, then the whoever makes the motion ought to be able to get the five and therefore pass. See what I'm saying? And the simple majority of. Planning ahead, but if one of you wants to do that, then one of you is gonna do that. So I can't, I can't tell you not to. It's just I'm telling you that. I think changing something this big should be difficult, but. That's just my two cents. Anybody else wanna chime in on that topic?
Yeah, I would, I would say I disagree. Um, I kind of look at it as, you know, that meeting. Um, an adjustment was made to the overall plan. And I don't think everybody truly thought through it and the implications of it and the uh, impact to the K through two learners and the pre-K learners. I think it went through more what it should have been. Um, I don't think that you're gonna see adjustments to this plan. This big of modifications on a weekly basis, uh, but I'd also like to see the plan before I do that. I mean, I got initially, I thought one way, but you know, I'd also like to see what Sue comes back with as to, you know, what. Um, Suzie just just laid out, because I truly think it's the best thing for the student. Um, but I don't know what they're gonna lay out. So, you know, do you make sure they can actually do exactly what we're asking? Um, in a fashion that takes care of the learners in town, uh, because I think those learners are gonna be left behind if we. Go forward on the plan that we currently have.
So what I'm hearing Diane is that Jamie is hinting that at the next meeting, he may be making a motion to amend what previously passed. Alright. So hopefully the admin team will get us that answer by.
As part of the information gathering of the admin team, and again, I I hesitate to add more to your plate, but. Um, I I think it's really essential that we understand what, any change we make, the impact it has on the teachers. Uh, I know that they they weighed in to us with with emails, and I think it's super important for those K to two teachers. That we understand what we're asked to do in this COVID environment. Um, and so I think any information that you bring to us. I I really hope that it can uh, contain, you know, some, some feedback or reflection. Or or something to understand what what this will mean for for the teachers, because I I. I get how this is a really hard place to be for parents and kids and teachers, and I want to make sure we understand. All sides of the issue uh, before we vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. That was a great point. It was something actually I was gonna bring up regarding uh, one of Marty's slides, the one with the long list of bullets. And he answered the question, which was, when is the information regarding safety and protocols? And all the, all that type of stuff, school by school, gonna be shared with staff and parents, because I think that's very important, and you said. Hopefully by tomorrow, there, everyone's gonna get that information, so.
Yeah, I'd say beginning tomorrow, there there'll be some public information, and then I will refine it and add to it.
Great. Thank you, because I know the admin team will wanna be talking to the teachers. Yes, Nicole?
Um, I'm wondering if we can circle back to cohort C, if we're, are we feeling like we're in a place to wrap up the other part of the conversation now?
Yes, Jamie has said he's going to possibly make a motion.
Um, is there any way, Dr. Sh, would you mind putting that slide back up again for cohort C? I just had a couple of quick clarifying questions. So the first one, I can start with the Commonwealth Virtual Schools. Yep, perfect. Uh, the Greenfield Commonwealth Virtual School and the Teca one. Um, I'm wondering first off, if you can speak to. Um, concerns about accessibility for those. Um, there's been some conversation among um, some parents. That Teca in particular might be full and have a fairly long waiting list. Is there more accessibility? Because they'd be coming through the school district, or is that more of a, parents would be registering kind of on their own?
Can I steal your limelight, Marty?
Yeah, please do.
So there, there, there is only room for one at a time or pieced together programs at those two schools. So we cannot enroll students in a complete program at either uh, Teca or Greenfield. Um, virtual, uh, but we can purchase course options, but we can't, kids, we can't send kids there.
Gotcha. Okay, so we'd be purchasing as a school district, the option and kind of making it happen through, under the, under the. What I wanna say, under the administration of the school district?
Yes, right. We would have to have an educator overseeing those programs for the students who pick those particular courses, right? And um, I think um, Greenfield might let us bundle four core courses in one special. It still doesn't get to our time and learning requirements. Um, so we would supplement the long model courses, which is not a bad thing. I mean, that's, that's fine. But we we can't, kids can't engage in a full curriculum at either of those two options.
Okay, thank you. That's very clear.
As you can imagine, they're beyond full. The waiting list has a waiting list.
And my next question, kind of with, with all of these options, um, and maybe you can speak to this as well. Um, but you were mentioning um, earlier that the. I hate to say DNC, the Commonwealth Virtual School and the Learning Management ones might take a little bit longer to transition. If you were to choose to go from one back to the other, say you began the year remotely and you chose the Teca option. To go from that to the hybrid option might take a little bit more time. Um, so I'm curious if you guys can speak to sort of what expectation roughly, obviously, I understand this might change. But um, what sort of timing might families be looking at if they began the year in cohort C? Under any of these three models, whether it's the integration with the hybrid or the Commonwealth or the learning management systems. What sort of timeframe might they be looking at if they chose to transition back into the hybrid model later?
So. Um, probably no more than a couple of weeks. Uh, what, what gets tricky with the high school, if if someone's in a course at. Uh, one of the academies or the management systems that doesn't match up with the course that they can pop right into at the high school. We'd want them to finish that up, but that's a luxury they would have. They can do, they can do both at once, so. Um, it's actually probably a little more flexible than we're making it feel like. And and we take new students who come in all the time and find them places to be and live and. Get their courses under control in a matter of a week or two at most, so, yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Any other questions about the reopening update?
Can I, can I go back to the Suzie question? Sorry. I just feel like we were thinking about it, if we thought about it as we planned for a full day of school. Marty, jump in here. If we planned for, if we planned for a full day of school for students, right, as opposed to planning for a half day and an additional half day. We planned a regular full day of school for students and assumed most students would be there, the kids who left half day. Um, could potentially then join the C group at home. So I think it was just the way I was looking at it, or, and Marty, maybe you can.
I think, I think if we, I think there's simpler ways to think about it.
Yeah.
If, if we were to create a half day and a full day and and, you know, we'd be going back to the drawing board and not just for K two. I think we'd be going back to the drawing board K five.
Yeah.
So I worry about that, but that doesn't mean we can't think, you know, even further about just. Can, can a student leave half day and and just sort of jump into cohort C for the remainder of their day?
A kindergarten student could leave half day, period. They don't have to meet those learn, time and learning expectations, right? And then, right, one and two could jump into cohort C when they got home.
And i- and even what we just said, I would just uh, ask that you give us time, but.
Right.
Yeah.
Work that thinking through the the principals who deal with this on a daily basis, but. You know, that, that, you know, that might be an option.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the superintendent? Uh, Bronwyn?
Um, last night at the uh, select board meeting. Um, Mr. Lucaso was asking Marty about the HVAC, which um. Some people were were curious about in terms of questions I did not know the answers to. Uh, so I said I would ask, like, if we had air quality tests done at any of the schools. Um, also, someone was wondering, it was actually the same person, wondering. Um, if the HVAC systems were. Uh, inspected by like, um, like an HVAC company or engineers. I know some towns are doing that. Again, I said I have no idea, but I can ask. Um, so I'm just curious and. Wanted to present that question, um, that a few people had.
Mr. Mazza, you mind fielding that one for us?
Um, yeah, we, we have had the. HVAC systems assessed by our HVAC contractor, and they were the ones who. Recommended the ionizers that we have moved forward with to purchase and install. Um, obviously, the, they vary in degree of ability to move air based on. Uh, the age of the system, so our middle schools, uh, which were developed to meet code at the time that they were constructed. Uh, do not have the same capacity that the elementary and middle, uh, yeah, the elementary and middle and high schools have. So, um, we are looking at options, maybe even putting some fans to help bring more. Fresh air into the rooms, weather permitting, uh, to help increase that airflow. So the air is not stagnant, that the system actually moves in the. Elementary and high school because of the the components, the number of fans that actually work to bring outside air in. And create that air exchange more frequently than what would occur in our middle school. So we have not necessarily done air quality tests. The buildings have been empty since March. So I would say the air is probably uh, very healthy right now, because there's no occupants in the buildings, but. Um, we most certainly acknowledge uh, the. Uh, the limitations that the HVAC sys- HVAC systems at the high school, at the middle schools have. And we are taking steps to try to uh, address them as best we can with the limited capacity those systems have.
So Bronwyn, can I ask a follow up on your question? So the, the HVAC company that did the inspection, are they, is there some sort of state government standard? By which they are checking our equipment to make sure that it meets current? The current standard is based on the COVID situation? Is there such a thing?
I think they were looking at uh, the frequency of the air exchange. How, how often is air in a room actually turning over in terms of the volume? I think they were looking at the filter, the filters and the MIR, uh, that we discussed at previous meetings and recommendations based on the systems. Uh, if they can handle a higher grade or finer level of air filters. And still function in the manner in which they were designed. So we, we moved forward with purchasing and having those filters installed. Um, so I'm not sure if there's a particular standard uh, that there is, that's published in terms of. Uh, airflow, because of the age of those, especially the middle school buildings. And the systems that were, that they, that they have, it wasn't set up for the air exchange. That current standards are in place now.
Can we get, I have, I guess a request similar to Suzie's question. Is it possible to get that update from facilities? That basically to say to us, yes, we're meeting what is required right now? I just wanna be sure that, I mean, we're looking at this a lot from an academic standpoint, and the kids washing their hands and using their hand sanitizer. And it's all for naught if the buildings can't handle the capacity the way we need them to. So I think that would be important for us to. Be reassured. Is that possible that somebody can do that?
Yeah, we can follow up, ask Nick Jorgantus to be prepared to speak to it at next week's meeting.
Thank you. Bronwyn?
Um, Tom, I I don't, I don't know if you talked about it, it was on a list. I don't, I don't know the special words, like. Ionizers or something, you were buying them for the schools, is that the term?
Yeah, for the schools that have air handlers, which is not all of our schools, but the, the schools that have those systems in place. Uh, instead of a UNIVET, we are moving forward with purchasing ionizers.
For the schools that don't, where?
Um, so I believe it's the two elementary schools in Williams have UNIVET systems, so individual units. That bring the air. that bring the air into the classroom instead of a central air handler that kind of has supplies and returns in each classroom and are handled through a big centralized unit instead of individual classroom-based.
So are we doing something there as well? Just like something different?
Uh, we're looking at, again, the filters where the air would pass through. But I don't believe, I don't, I don't know that we have the same option of installing equipment similar to what we're doing with the schools that have the central air handlers.
Suzie?
Just quickly, related to that, was, was there in that report that you received or in that assessment you received? Was there a request or a suggestion to possibly use portable air purifiers in those cases?
Yeah, I think where we've identified rooms or spaces that have low airflow and no outside air access, we were looking to place some portable air purifiers and in probably the health suites where there may be more possibility of students coming into those areas that might have symptoms.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. And while we're in the, the process of requesting information for our next meeting, can we get the athletic director maybe to come back to Kevin's question earlier? So if we can get someone to speak intelligently about what our decision on the start of school has on athletics, if, if any at all?
Sure.
Answer to get. Any other questions about reopening, folks? Jamie?
Yeah, just, 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 I was just thinking about other extracurricular activities. Should we have somebody that speaks on behalf of that too, to give direction, you know? Because it's not just about sports, it's about all the extracurricular activities. You know, I don't know if that's you, Dr. O'Shea or not, but who makes the call on that? And that all should be aligned, I guess, in theory, or we should at least understand what we're doing there.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think that piece of it falls on us as administrators to identify those extracurriculars that can safely run under the, the safety requirements that we put in place. And those extracurriculars that could be run virtually. And those extracurriculars that really don't, can't, can't be run either way I described. So I think that's, that's on us to, to go through that and, and identify what clubs and activities we can continue to offer.
Thank you. Great point, Jamie. One great difference is that the extracurriculars don't have to deal with the MIA. That's one really wonderful thing for them. Bronwyn, you have a question?
I was just going to ask Tom a follow-up question. I just thought of, for the schools that you mentioned that have the single things you were talking about, that you guys are looking into stuff, when will we know that it, they're, it's been completed? So, because there are some people worried about this and I just want to make sure we address it and get the stuff in there. And I know we have a, a while before school starts, but I think it would put some people at ease. And even maybe, you know, some people talking about Cohort C might want to move to Cohort A or B.
Are you referring to the buildings that have the UNIVETS in the classrooms that were?
UNIVET, sorry.
Independently? So the, the different filters, is that what you're referring to, Bronwyn? The higher MIR filters?
I don't know if it's, if, if that's, if that's enough. You also talked about putting those. I, I don't know what the answers are. I just want to make sure. I know you said you, you guys are looking into it. I just was wondering if there's a timetable or if we can assure the community that, you know, by, you know, a certain time, like stuff on order. I'm just not sure what we're waiting for, I guess.
Yeah, I believe the, the ionizers that I spoke to are in the process of being installed. I believe we've already ordered new filters with the higher level filtration. We are ordering window fans for the middle schools. I believe we are talking about DD window fans that would help increase the airflow in the classrooms. Last time I checked, I think they were pretty readily available to receive well before school starts.
Okay, thanks.
Suzie?
Yes, I, I know we're asking a lot of information gathering, but I thought it might help to, I, I guess what I'm looking for is both, probably from Beverly or Chief Dearborn, but also from the school side of things. What will our overall protocol be for when, if, when any student is, any student or staff member or a member of the school community is potentially suspected of or tested positive for COVID? I, I, I really, I haven't seen anything yet on that in terms of what our protocols will be. So I'm curious kind of where that stands.
I think the, the go-to document there is that 20-page COVID-19 response protocol document that Desi put together. The, I think the only thing that I, I want to get some clarification from our Board of Health is on the, on the quarantining requirement. Whether, the extent to which a, a negative test can allow that required quarantine period to be shortened. I think that was one thing that, that Beverly was looking for some additional information on as well. The, I can sort of try to pull that up quickly if we're, perhaps as we move to another topic, I can pull that up quickly from that Desi guidance.
I, I think I'm really more concerned about, you know, how it applies within a building, you know? Like what, what happens if a teacher and, you know, if God forbid, it's a, you know, special teacher who is traveling from classroom to classroom or, or things like that, you know? I, I just think I'd like to have a little bit of information and background on how that will all play out.
So the, I, I, I think I'd want to take a second to try to pull that up if I could or, or we can bring back some information on that at your next meeting.
Oh, hello? Hey, Marty?
Yeah.
Oh, Ryan, am I good to? Yeah, I would, I would prefer not even, and if Suzie's okay with this, not even going through, I mean, that document is a document, but maybe if we could talk through like a, a, a real-life case study. You know, if this happened, so the parents can understand what would happen if their child was in school and a teacher, you know, was, you know, was diagnosed with COVID, whatever scenario. Do a life, one or two examples, so everybody that's on the, you know, the, you know, Zoom here could actually understand what would happen. And every situation is going to be different. We all get that. But, you know, just to walk us through what happens, you know, so they can at least understand it. You know, maybe we just do that the next meeting is like an informational. If this happens, here's what we're planning on doing, just so you know, you know? And kind of give a real-life example of what's going to happen. So if, if, you know, ju- just so we can like, you know, that, that type of example, I think would give everybody a much firmer understanding versus, you know, whenever, you know, kind of walk through, here's what Desi says to do. I go to Beverly, Beverly says this and we do this. So I would like to hear that, because I'm not real confident on what's going to happen. I'm, I'm confident enough, but you know, I think if we all talk through it, at least it'll give the public a better idea, so.
Yeah, I think it, it comes down to that sort of, the, the general trend is to evaluate, to, to separate, to clean and disinfect, and then, and then do the testing and the contact tracing. And the, the quarantining requirements and the testing requirements are, are well spelled out. But I think to go through some hypotheticals, the way you described, that our next meeting with Beverly or Chief Dearborn would, would be helpful.
Thank you. Or head of nurses, maybe it could be helpful also. Nicole, you got a question?
Yeah, just to add on to that, I agree with Jamie. That would be helpful to hear kind of some of those scenarios next week. And to that end, maybe we could also ask, and maybe this would be Beverly or Chief Dearborn, I'm not sure who would be best suited for this, to address what this would mean at a school level and what it means at a completely town level. So for instance, if there were four teachers quarantined or 10 children quarantined, at what point would they make the recommendation that an entire classroom needs to be made remote? Or a school building, or the entire town? Sort of what are their parameters as far as that contract tracing and also looking at positive cases and how many people are quarantined? Where would their sort of line be from building to building?
Great, thank you. Kevin?
I really like the idea of sharing the scenarios next week. One thing that I'm just curious about, I mean, I think Marty's putting the document up right now. Is there any reason not to just share this document with our entire community? Just so if parents want to read through it, they have it, they can read through it, right?
Yeah, it's been, it's been sent out directly to folks and posted on our website as well.
So, so parents do have access to it? Excellent, all right. I think that's an important point to make. So I, I just want to, my, and again, I want to make sure I understand it correctly. The state is telling us we have to do these things, right? These are not, you can do this, you might do this. It is, you will do this. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, and, and these are, Board of Health orders are, are legal orders that we, we would be compelled to follow. These quarantines are not requests. They are orders that will come from the Board of Health. And, and what I heard from the Board of Health is that the protocols in this document really mirror how they've responded to communicable disease situations, you know, for, for decades in school settings. This is obviously, you know, heightened attention. It's more serious. But the document really spells out for anyone who wants to take a peek the specific protocols, if a student is symptomatic at home or is found to be symptomatic at school, and same thing with staff, and then it gets into the protocols. If it's a, you know, what would we do if there are multiple cases, multiple exposures? And, and what type of decision-making that would trigger? So I think to do some, some of the hypotheticals, some of the what-ifs and, and put some, some, some of those case studies under review with the, with the right people at your next meeting, that makes some sense.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Our next order of business is superintendent report?
Uh, no report at this time. I think mostly what I needed to say, you, you heard from me earlier, so.
Next is chair report for me, which is the same. I think I've been commenting all night on this topic. I think just being mindful of people's schedules and plans when we're coming up with ideas and using solid data to do it. So if we get the answers to our questions that we brought up tonight in our next meeting, well, I'll be making much more informed decisions. So thank you very much. Student report, Armin?
Nothing to report tonight.
Okay, thank you. Bronwyn, at the moment I'm losing light. Can you call on the next issue while I try to get some light out here on my porch?
Diane, do you have that in front of you?
It's the LPVEC report, energy sustainability in open space.
Okay, so I'll start with LPVEC. We actually met last week. Director Roland Joyle put together a really good plan. It's really tricky because there's seven member districts. After going through everything and asking lots of different questions, we voted 6-1 for, it's, it's technically a hybrid opening for the students attending C-Tech because they're pretty much already hybrid because they're ninth and 11th graders go in the mornings and their 10th and 12th graders go in the afternoon. So it's like an AM, PM cohort already. But they're not going to have school on Wednesday. And the high need students will be there much more frequently as with all the other schools. So the students in Long Meadow can expect to still be able to attend LPVEC when school starts up.
Excellent, thank you. Anything, anything from energy and sustainability or open space?
No report from energy and sustainability.
And none from Jamie either. Fantastic. No report from finance, sub, curriculum, sub, or eval sub? Policy sub will be meeting on Thursday. Is that correct? Correct? Fantastic, thank you. So there's no ongoing business. Our new business on our agenda tonight are the committee goals, which were submitted and put into categories. So how would you all like to do this? You want to discuss them? Do you want to, in the interest of time and what we've been doing all night and for the past month, look at them and discuss them at the next meeting? What are your, what are your thoughts? I'm open to hear from everybody. I can read them out. I can at least put out the categories to the public. I could read them to the public. They are part of our documents. Diane, is that correct? Are they part of our documents or only after we vote on them?
So all I did was take what was provided to me and put them into categories. I've shared the Google Doc with Marty so that if you wanted to just go through and see which categories you wanted to continue, if you want to continue them all, if you want to try to get the votes more succinct, not the votes, the goals, I mean, more succinct. We could do that.
The, the document where you categorized the goals, the individual goals that were submitted, that, that was included in the committee packet?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's difficult to access. I, I wasn't, I didn't have access to it for some reason.
Suzie, I didn't see it until before the meeting.
Yeah, it's, it's common theme and I had, I downloaded it, but I still don't have access to it. I had to request access.
Marty, could you share your screen?
Sure, yeah.
And then, Ryan, you were asking, I mean, maybe we could split this up into a two-part thing in terms of maybe looking at them tonight, going through, you know, the comment sections. And Diane, thank you very much for putting all that stuff together. Really appreciate it. And then, you know, maybe take the week to think about it and revisit again next week, if that sounds good to people.
We got consensus? Does that sound good to the group? Good time to process and make sure you see them? All right.
I, I just was, oh, okay. No, I was just thinking, we have a lot of information that's going to be presented next week. And I don't know, is, are we allowed to look at them and see if people feel differently after they look at them? Because they're, they're not that, they're not that kind of different than. I think we might be able to digest them tonight, I guess is what I'm saying.
Okay. Except some people didn't see them all. Is that correct? Suzie, you're muted, but I think you were saying yes.
I have not seen them. I'm opening them as we speak.
Okay, then I, I, yeah, I defer to the others then, if, if not everybody had a chance to see them.
So just for public conception, the categories of our goals are on communication, curriculum, culture and climate, health and safety, fiscal, student learning and goal setting and progress monitoring. And as you can see, there are a, many bullets in some of the categories. So this will take some time to go through, which is obviously part of what we need to do. So this will take some time to go through, which is obviously part of what, uh, we need to do. So I'm open to the discussion. If you guys wanna go through these right now and talk about them, we can. Um, and maybe a, um. Just a reminder, yeah, go ahead Nicole.
Do we need to do all of them at once? Could we go through some of the categories that look a little bit smaller and knock those out and come back for the others? Or do they all have to be approved on the same night?
Well, it wouldn't be approv- I think if we discussed one of these things right now, we'd be discussing them and they wouldn't be approved until a, a, a motion to approve goals. That sound correct Diane?
Yes.
So is there anything on the year, anyone wants to talk about tonight? I think that could be the first step. If there's something you wanna discuss, we could do that first. As Nicole suggested, maybe the smaller categories or the ones that seem to line up? Yes, Kevin?
I, I just wanna make sure, uh, seeing all of the information, the information that I'm seeing. Has only goals from five people and I know that submitted isn't in the thing that I'm looking at. So I'm just con- concerned that I might not be seeing every.
Mine are not in there, that is correct.
I also see one with only five people.
I'm losing everybody right now. Might it make sense to delay until we have goals from everybody so that we can make sure we're getting everybody's input?
I don't, um, yeah, I think that is a good idea, Kevin. Also, I think that, um. Some people didn't necessarily do five, all five sections, cause it was due goals for up to five. Um, so that could be part of it. But I do agree with Kevin that, um, I mean, Ryan didn't have a chance, um, so maybe. We could wait, um, whatever you guys think. Marty has an idea.
I, I would recommend waiting until you've got, uh, a full list of submissions. And then what has worked in the past, when, when everything's in, um, Sue and Diane and I could take a. Uh, a first stab at creating sort of a synthesized goal statement. That captures, incorporates the goals in each of the categories or buckets that we've identified. I think that way it would give you a little bit more to work with. It's, it's difficult, I'd say, for a committee to try in the space of a meeting to. Develop a synthesized goal statement relating that, that sort of captures the spirit of the submission. So we'd, we'd be happy to do that legwork for you and then you can adjust, refine, add to, delete as you see fit. I think it would be a more efficient process for you.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, Suzie, I mean, uh, Sue?
It's also good to know, um, how many goals you really wanna end up with at the end of the day, as you look at them. Because sometimes you end up bucketing them and, you know, from two categories into one category to get the main point. So just as you look at them, I don't know, Ryan, what you're thinking for how many goals your committee will have this year. But as people look at it, it might be helpful to know.
Yeah, I don't think there's a requirement. I, there were only two things that I cared about and they're not on there because I knew I was gonna discuss. And we discussed it and they are already mentioned by other people. Um, so I don't think there's a requirement, but we can discuss it as a group. And if we wanna have two, if we wanna have three, we're gonna, we'll figure that out when we talk about it with everybody. So you wanna push this to the, yeah, Kevin, go ahead.
I, I just wanna ask a clarifying question, cause I, I know that I did not do this when I sent in my goals. Uh, is our, are, are we aiming to have goals from each of us in all of these categories? Or is it just like you, more like what you said, Ryan, if you have two goals or three goals or four goals, that's fine. We don't have to span all of the categories.
We created the categories just to, for the, for the purpose of organizing the information. So Diane created, placed, created the categories based on what you said.
So, sure, yes, you did it correctly and understood exactly what I, what I meant, what I said, what I said.
Um, just thinking that, um, I think last year we had more of an opportunity to, you know, sort of formulate these conversationally. Um, and I know, I know time hasn't allowed that, but is it possible to, you know, engage in a retreat? Kind of atmosphere to, to flesh these out a little bit, um, instead of it being, you know. I think we used a retreat last year, if I'm not mistaken, with the admin team in particular, to get some ideas from them and then, and then we had another session. It just, it feels a little, um, it feels like they're two separate things and it, it'd be nice to have it more conversational.
So it's a calendar situation?
Yes, it is, sorry.
Sorry, Jamie wants to have a meeting two or three times a week, so. Uh, so what are your thoughts? Yes, Kevin?
I really like Suzie's suggestion. Uh, I felt like it, it really helped us come together as a committee and an admin team last year when we were able to do that retreat. Obviously it's getting harder, because I, I'm not sure if it's even possible to do it in person and assume it. Uh, is a little bit more difficult, but I, I, I do like Suzie's point that when we had conversation. Um, among the committee and the full admin team, I feel like we got to a much stronger place. Then I think we would without that level of conversation.
So, uh, yes, Gianna, go ahead.
Yeah, I was trying to remember and I thought we did, so yeah, I would, I would love to see what Suzie and Kevin and everybody else is talking about happen.
So Marty, can you possibly get back to us on the possibility of retreat dates with the admin team? Sue?
It's, uh, I'm looking at the group. Probably everybody's committed for those first ten days of school, but I was thinking sometime like later afternoon. I don't know, Ryan, you guys might be in school, but I thought it might be, maybe things will be a little slower as people are doing their PD. And they're, they're trying their, their stuff and we could, you know, meeting like late afternoon or something. Marty's got thumbs up. Right, I think he's not gonna be busy.
Okay, so you, so you'll be able to give us some possible dates?
Sure, we'll send like a goo, uh, yeah, we'll send something.
One of those Diane polls that we got?
Yeah, yeah, yep.
Thank you very much. So we would have a motion, but we're going.
Ryan, you muted yourself.
Sorry, I muted myself mid-sentence. So we need a motion and to go back to the executive session, is that correct? Yep, nodding, yes. If someone wants to.
To reconvene into.
Reconvene.
Yeah, executive.
I moved that we reconvene into the executive session.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, just one point, are we coming back out into open session or are we not coming back?
To not come back out, right? Oh, but we would say that in the other one? How do we say them, really Diane, in this case?
Do I amend my motion?
You, you do have to. You're not gonna come back out into open session, I don't believe, but you're going to. Move to reconvene into open session and then you've gotta go through the purposes again, sorry. To continue your conversation, um, not for the minutes, cause you've done those, but to purpose two.
I, I, I'm happy to do that, so, um, I move that we reconvene into executive session, not to come back into open session. And then I will read what we did before. Um, to meet an executive session pursuant to Master of Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A, Purpose Two. To conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with all staff. Not to reconvene into open session.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing them, we'll do a roll call vote. Gianna?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
And yes for me. Thank you folks. We will see you next week.